The webinar will begin shortly. Please remain on the line. The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen only.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 8th. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And led by our Town Manager.
Wow.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To their republic.
To their republic. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, starting with open forum. So, the first thing on our agenda is open forum. And it gives me great pleasure to announce that after more than a year, the Legislature and the Governor have finally signed off on our article from October of 2019, Special Town Meeting, approving the changes to our charter to make it include inclusionary language, as was passed at our October 2019 Special Town Meeting. So henceforth, we will be known as the Select Board. We are, and Town Hall has already started initiating changes to our stationary letterhead, the website, you know, how we are referred to in documents, et cetera. It's not complete. Give them a couple of weeks to get it all done. If anybody sees anything or we miss anything, please just send an email to the Town Manager's office or to myself and we'll get it fixed and we'll attend to it. I would also, I would be remiss if I do not publicly acknowledge and thank the League of Women Voters for all of their hard work on this project. It was under the League who basically took the lead in going through our charter, making the changes, finding all of the changes and really shepherding this through and bringing it to completion. So, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters. It is much appreciated. And now, I think as we indicated at this past Fall Town Meeting, we will turn to the next documents of the town, including the bylaws and the zoning bylaws to start fixing that language and to ensure that it's changes to inclusionary language. So, that is the next project on the table. So, thank you, everybody. And yes, we are officially now the Select Board. Oh, thank you, Mark. So, our next item on the agenda is we have two Girl Scouts, Zoe Seiger and Megan Pindak, who are going for their Silver Girl Scout High Award. And as part of that award, they have put together a project having to do with the prevention of lost pets. And they would like to and have asked for the opportunity to present their project both to us and to our listening public. So, Eric, if you could unmute the ladies and if the ladies would unmute themselves, we can listen to and hear their project.
Read the slides, please.
And the slides. Great, there you go.
Megan, would you like to start? Megan?
Go ahead and say it.
Hi. My name's Zoe Seiger. I have with me here Megan Pindak. And we're 805-2. And we're reaching for our High Silver Award on the Prevention of Lost Pets. Next slide, please. So, in a year, one out of every three pets go missing. And out of the ones who have no identification, 90% of them don't get returned home. Next slide, please.
As I said, Megan said she didn't get unmuted. Did you ask?
Megan says she can't get unmuted. Is that?
Hang on a minute. Eric, have you unmuted her?
I don't see anyone by that name. Would she be under a different name?
Kristen Pindak.
It's under Kristen Pindak.
There we go. I see a Kevin Pindak.
Yes, that's her dad.
I was gonna say, it's probably Kevin, Eric.
I'm sorry, I can't see the slides on my end. Did something happen?
Because they're not there right now. Hang on a minute, okay?
Sorry.
That's okay, we'll get it right. You know, the technological challenges of remote meetings.
We like to look at ourselves, so that's why we're on the screen right now.
Styler hair. There we go.
There we go. Okay. And Megan, do we have Megan now, too?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Our goal with this project is to raise awareness about lost pet prevention. We will focus on how to protect your pet's health, improve your chances of getting your pet back, and what to do if your pet gets lost. A good place to start is getting your pet registered with the town, although this is mainly for dogs. If a dog is found with the ID tag the town provides, they can look up its owner in the database resulting in more returned pets.
Another simple way to protect your vet pet is to vaccinate and spay and neuter them. The outside world is home to many diseases in which our pets have never been exposed to. And keeping their vaccinations up to date will prevent them from catching these diseases if they ever get outside. Spaying and neutering will also prevent unwanted litters and future health problems. Next slide, please.
Microchipping is one of the easiest ways to help ensure your pet will get returned home. For about $45, the vet will insert a micro tracking chip under your pet's skin. This does not harm the pet in any way. If your pet gets lost, local animal shelters, vet offices, and animal control can scan your pet for a microchip to find out where it came from and to help get it home.
So, even with these preparations, there's still a possibility that your pet will get lost. If it does, here are a couple of things you can do. One thing is to contact your local animal control. They can help look for your pet. You can either call them or Westford Animal Control has an online form that you can fill out if you find a lost pet or if you lose a pet. The form includes questions such as a photo of the pet, where you found the pet, or where the pet was last seen, and the pet's identification.
Social media is also one of the most powerful tools in finding pets these days. Just in Westford, we have several Facebook groups, including the Westford Massachusetts Lost and Found Pets, Massachusetts Lost Pets, and Missing Dogs Massachusetts. In addition to that, there is PawBoost. PawBoost is a fee-based service that will help you get your lost pet information out.
Next slide, please. Thank you. We hope this helps to keep your pets safe. Any questions?
Does anybody from the board have any questions? I'm not seeing any. Oh, Tom, yes, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to compliment you on a great presentation. Do, so is the project more public awareness communication like this? Are there other places that you'll be sharing the findings that you have here?
Um, yeah. We hope to, we hope that if they open, that we'll be able to share it, to share it some local shelters in the spring.
That's great, thank you.
In YouTube video.
Well, thank you very much. I think this is all helpful information for the public to have. And we appreciate you coming to the board tonight to share it with us. And good luck with your project, okay? And attaining your award.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for having us.
Our pleasure. Have a good evening.
As well.
Okay. I know, Tom, you said you had something for open forum.
Yes, we know from communications here in these meetings and other places how much our town values the work of Westford Cats and local news. I think the community also knows that finance is everywhere, but in that area, too, we're under pressure. Westford Cat is organizing an auction this week. There's 80 great items there for you to look at and bid on. I'm gonna go ahead and put a little YouTube link in the chat section, so you can click on that after the meeting and take a look at some of the great things that are there. It's running this week. And so, instructions can be either found in the link or you can go to the Westford Cat website. Please take a look and support it. Thank you all who provided gifts. It's a really important way for us to keep local news alive. And I'm gonna go ahead and post that link right now.
Okay. Anybody else? Scott?
I just wanted to give a congratulatory statement to Arnie Price, who, one of our food inspectors, who won a statewide award, the Michael Soracqua Award, for his help with our local businesses dealing with COVID, trying to get our restaurants open, giving them advice to stay open and stay safe. And I'm glad that he's recognized for that because it's, you know, critical that we support businesses at this time and he's done a great job that way. So.
Congratulations to Arnie. And I think we recognized Arnie and his achievements at one of our last meetings sometime in November, I think.
He made a little song this last.
Right, so.
He made a little song a week or two ago.
Congratulations to him.
Andrew, I don't know if you see Emily's hand. Emily, tell her as her hand up.
No, I didn't, so thank you. So, Emily?
Eric, I don't know if we need to unmute Emily.
I think we need to unmute Emily.
Thank you, everybody. And I may be a little early because I have not been able to open the agenda yet. I've looked at it, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who worked so hard to transform the Board of Select into Select Board. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a big deal.
You're welcome. It is a big deal. Okay, and the fact that Emily raised her hand just reminds me, which, you know, to give our usual instructions for folks, which is, and to remind folks that the meeting is being recorded and is being televised. In addition, questions that are submitted are also made part of the public record. And if you do have a question, if you would, in addition to raising your hand, if you would also submit your question in the question box, it's actually easier for us to see the questions when they're in the question box versus raising your hand because sometimes, as you just saw, thankfully, Tom saw it, we missed the raised hand. So, it just is easier and more helpful if you can write your questions out. So, thank you for that. And with that, do we have anything else for open forum? Okay, not seeing any. So, moving right along to our 7:05 PM item, which is a public hearing, which is a request for a change of manager on a General Law Chapter 138, Section 12, All Alcohol Restaurant License for Burton's Grill of Westford LLC, doing business as Burton's Grill at One Cornerstone Square. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Patty, are you out there? I know you are, I see your name. Can we unmute Patty?
Yes, I am out here.
Aye, Patty. So, are there any issues or concerns with the license?
There is not. I talked with Andy this afternoon. He actually handled this and everything is satisfactory as far as we can see.
Okay. Frank, I see that you are online and with us. I will give you the opportunity, anything that you would like to say?
I'd really just like to say thank you for adding us to the agenda this evening. We appreciate your continued support. It's a great town to do business in and the community's been very supportive of us through a difficult year. Thank you very much.
With that, any questions from the board? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. And now I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Moved, second.
All those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. So, thank you. And Frank, you're all set.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Energy Committee to discuss the Special Town Meeting Resolution of Article 14 to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use to achieve the Commonwealth of Massachusetts limit of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 and determine their capability to take on this initiative. So, I see we have some members of the Energy Committee with us. Hi, Mike and Matthew. And I know Beth is here with us for the Climate Coop. So, let me, let me start with Mike. I know that the Energy Committee met last night. We did receive your report to the board this morning. And we have looked at it, but why don't you briefly just report on what the Energy Committee's discussion and decision was last night?
Sure, thank you. And can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so there is a presentation. If I have time, I'd like to walk through it. If not, I can just give a overview summary. There's a meeting material with an email sort of as a cover letter and then maybe about a nine-slide presentation summarizing a recommendation from the Energy Committee, thank you, to the Select Board. We did vote on it last night. It was not unanimous, and I do note that in here. If we could go to the next slide, this is just the climate resolution text, if we need to refer back to it. I bolded a couple items that are relevant for the ask from the Select Board to the Energy Committee. And what the Energy Committee has been focusing on is just, what should this task force or committee be to really focus on studying and making recommendations to achieve the goal in line with the state goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050? If you go to the next slide, this is the summary of the recommendation. I drafted it and we discussed it. Members of the Energy Committee, as well as residents from town, including folks from Westford Climate Action. So, we recommend to have the Energy Committee be this task force mentioned in the climate resolution. We have discussed needing more resources, so we do recommend expanding the full membership from five to nine, maintain two alternatives with the, up to nine, exact number to be determined, and establish a subcommittee of the Energy Committee to really focus on this issue and this task. And to include members of the Energy Committee, folks from Select Board, other town committees, other folks from the community, certainly town staff as well. So, I thought with the information about the requirements and options of a subcommittee, that was the best choice here. And certainly, it likely makes sense to review Energy Committee name and charge, given these new developments. And certainly, some folks have recommended changes along those lines. So, I'm certainly open to considering that. And certainly, we would want to invite interested residents to participate in this effort. And I think they'll have different options. As I know, this was approved, but not unanimous. And the dissenting members' alternate proposal is on the last slide. So, if we could go to the next slide, please. This talks about what I understand, information on subcommittees. And thank you, Jody, for responding to questions on this and sharing information. This was helpful. And again, with this information, I thought that this really is part of the best solution. It offers flexibility, still visibility, and opportunity for people to participate in a couple different ways. So, moving on, I have some more bullets about the reasoning behind the Energy Committee Subcommittee. So, if you go to the next slide. Again, I thought that the current charge of the Energy Committee, and I have that on subsequent slides, is in line and full enough, complete enough, really to motivate the Energy Committee to work on this task. I do acknowledge that the committee would need more resources. And I think expanding the committee and getting more people to participate, we can meet the task. Acknowledge we may want to rename and recharge the Energy Committee. This meets the interest of avoiding adding another committee that would have some overlap to the Energy Committee. So, that was a concern expressed. And again, as a subcommittee, I think it's nice that Energy Committee members can join but don't have to participate in this task. And non-Energy Committee members can participate in this task. So, if you go to the next slide, please. I did just want to note that there is a website on the town page that has information about the Energy Committee and just a very short blurb about the Energy Committee Charter. But this is not our full charge. So, if you could go to the next slide, please. There is another website that has the full charge. And you see it's much longer, much more complete. It does mention reduce energy usage, increase renewable energy, shrink carbon emissions. So, these are some of the core tasks of achieving net zero greenhouse gas emissions. So, I don't think the committee charge necessarily needs to change. Again, but I am open to, you know, we are open to reviewing it. So, next slide, please. And then here are my suggested, our suggested next steps if our recommendation is accepted. But I'll pause on that because I know that there are alternative proposals and some critiques of our proposal. So, go to the next slide, please. This is the alternative recommendation of the Energy Committee member. They felt a new committee with maybe some members of the Energy Committee, but also lots of other folks, given all the areas, the additional expertise that would be needed beyond the kind of energy that we've focused on, generally the electricity supply in town, transportation, buildings, waste, carbon sink management. So, we certainly acknowledge those are important areas, areas where the Energy Committee has not focused on. So, I did want to highlight that for your consideration and alternative recommendation from an Energy Committee member. And then just wanted to acknowledge the critiques that you've seen from others, including in Westford Climate Action, that it's not appropriate for the Subcommittee of the Energy Committee to do this. They have a different view. So, I'll just acknowledge that critique. And again, I tried to balance all interests in this proposal. So, I'll stop there. Thanks for your attention. Happy to take any comments. And I'm not sure if there's any other Energy Committees on who might have different opinions. But again, thanks for that opportunity.
Okay, so, let me, let me first ask if there's anybody from the Energy Committee who wants to add to what Mike has presented. Okay, Matthew?
Sure, I'll just add that I'm in favor of Mike's resolution. And I'm excited to see our group grow with some new energetic bodies that can strengthen our group for some big projects that are coming up in the next few years.
Okay, thank you. All right, and then I know Beth from Westford Climate Action is on. And I'd like to give Beth the opportunity to respond to the proposal and to also provide Westford Climate Action's input to this. So, Eric, if you can unmute Beth. And I think Beth has a slide that she wants to show.
And Andrea, is Carol Moore's on?
I'm here. Okay. Can you see me?
Carol, can you pick it up?
No, I, no, we can't.
Okay, I'm over in like a little thumbnail on the side.
We can hear it, it's fine, just.
Okay.
I can hear you.
All right. Okay, first of all, we would like to, Westford Climate Action would like to, that slide comes later. Yeah.
It's okay, you can stay up, go ahead.
Okay, Westford Climate Action would like to thank Mike Berlinski and the Energy Committee for their time and effort in putting this recommendation together. Westford Climate Action has significant concerns about the committee's recommendation regarding the implementation of the town net zero resolution passed back in October. We believe the recommendation does not reflect the scope, nature, and urgency of our resolution in addressing the escalating climate crisis. Heart and center of our article was the creation of a committee to produce a net zero roadmap to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Westford. to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in Westford. The recommendation put forward by the Energy Committee would be for a low-level Subcommittee that lacks visibility and is removed from town leadership. They would have no votes, and this is not what the town asked for. The committee we seek would, will require knowledgeable, dedicated individuals to carry out this work. Applicants need to feel that their time and energy is valued and has impact. It must have visibility and gravitas. It must have a direct connection to the Select Board. It must include all town stakeholders, the Select Board, town departments, business interests, and residents. Town meeting made its voice clear. The Energy Committee recommendation falls short, we believe, of what Westford is seeking.
Thanks, Carol. So just to continue on to explain what our recommendation is. So we recommend a committee that's closely aligned with the net zero resolution that we passed at special town meeting. We are recommending a committee that would be in the order of 12 to 15 members. We've done a lot of looking at what other towns in our area have done, and I have a few of the numbers here. Arlington has 15 members, Westro 14, Littleton has 11, Lexington is nine, Belmont is 13, Concord has about 15 members. We believe that that size is necessary to get the participation that you need from business, real estate, climate advocates, homeowners, and town, town boards, and employees. We believe, as Carol was saying, the charge and the name need to reflect the importance of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and the creation of a net zero plan. That should be front and center. All members have an equal vote. So this relates to Mike's recommendation of a Subcommittee which would include some members of the Energy Committee, but would be expanded with advisory members in this Subcommittee that would be appointed by the Energy Committee and would not have a, a full vote in the Energy Committee. So we are envisioning something more along the lines of what you recently created for the Diversity Committee, where it was a committee, you know, a fairly large committee where everyone had an equal vote. And we believe the structure of that committee, and this has been my experience with other Committees in town, the structure of the Committee, which may require subcommittees, I have nothing against subcommittees, but that that structure would be set up by the Committee after it was created, based on what they see as the needs and the talents and how the people in, in the organization want to structure themselves. So, so that's, that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Beth and Carol, and, and thank you to, to everyone, both in the Energy Committee and Westford Climate Action, for, for working on this and, and putting this together and presenting it to us tonight. We, we really, I think I'll speak on behalf of the Board, we really do appreciate all of your hard work in bringing this to us tonight. So with that, comments or questions from the Board? Scott, and then Tom?
So, yeah, I would echo the thanks. This is a lot of thought and, and careful thought that went into this, and I really appreciate that. I guess, you know, first, I kind of still want one committee. But I do think it needs to be a committee, town meeting, you know, tell the Select Board we want you to be in charge of this effort, making a Subcommittee out of the Energy Committee removes that direct line of control, I think town meeting intended. And also, Subcommittee's tend to be, they're intended for, you know, subtasks, got a committee with a, a charge, it has a temporary subtask, and you appoint a Subcommittee to report back and ends. This needs to be a, a long-term kind of committee effort. I think it deserves to be a full, a full committee. So I'm, I'm trying to think that we want, my, my opinion, to keep Energy Committee as it is. Change the, I'm not going to keep it as is, keep Energy Committee, adjust charge to reflect the net zero emissions goal in large, to bring in more expertise that we think we need. And probably change the name to make it more reflective of the request, meeting to have a task force. So I think, you know, I thought, so we, I think we, we'd augment Energy Committee, both in terms of its vision and its membership, and elevate importance, I think. This, this is clearly a town, a town objective that deserves a, you know, that's the kind of effort from our Committees.
Other comments? Tom, I know you had your hand up, and then Mark.
This is going to sound pretty familiar, but yeah, I, I think this is going to be the effort of multiple years, and I think that we'd be better served with one Committee than two. I'm glad that the Energy Committee is open to the idea of an expanded Charter, expanded name. So in, in summary, I think looking at, changing the name so it represents this broader mission, looking at the Charter to make sure it, it's inclusive of what town meeting has asked. Expanding to, to nine members could be good, it could be good to go to 11 members. I think you could potentially start with nine, we could look at the applicant pool, and as we've done in the past, if we see a very strong applicant pool that represents a diverse group of interests here, we could think about expanding it to 11. And I think it's important that, that this Committee, the renamed, rechartered Energy Committee, is, is holding this task directly responsible, directly appointed by the Select Board, directly responsible through the Select Board to the community. So I, I'm echoing Scott's recommendation.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm in full agreement with both Scott and Tom. Mike, can you do me a favor and just quickly summarize the backgrounds of the people who are on the Committee currently, for their professional background?
Yes, good question. I can't do that for all of us. I would say we have some folks who do work in the energy industry and some folks who don't, but we all have a, a common, or, or who didn't. But we all have a common interest and familiarity and, and in energy. I can speak for myself. I am in the energy industry, been at my whole career, currently an energy consultant, focusing on energy storage, generally electric storage, so I really generally focus on the electricity industry, but familiarity with, with lots of different resources, supply as well as demand issues. So that's my background. Other Energy Committees, Energy Committee members on can talk to that if, if you want to point to them.
Yeah, Matthew, do you, Andrew, if you mind?
Yeah. No, Matthew, can you?
My background's in engineering. I work in environmental consulting. My firm specializes in permitting, so I'm, I've permitted a lot of energy projects and am best familiar with, with that.
I'm, I'm looking to see if there are any other members of the Energy Committee. Yes, Julia?
Yes. Hi, sorry, I, yeah, I, I was a few minutes late, so I didn't want to jump in the middle. Yeah, my, my background is, is in technology. I've been on the Energy Committee for, gosh, six years now. My background is in technology and development and program management, and so I commit it from a, from the business standpoint a bit more than, than the engineering, energy standpoint specifically, but I, I have been actively involved from, from a, how do I put this? In green development programs, including building projects as well as other technologies. So that is, it touches grounds in, in other areas as well as conservation and other things. So well aware of, of the reach of a program like this, and glad to, to ensure that we are working collaboratively and leading the, leading into the various areas of what residents as well as business owners and other groups will, will, we will need to engage with.
Yeah, thank you. So the, the reason I was asking, Andrea, there's a, there's a professional status in the background of the people in the Energy Committee, soon to be something else potentially, that I think is very valuable when you're starting to talk about the breadth and depth of what has to be done over the next 30 years. I'm not sure all these people will be on it still in 30 years, but that kind of skill and background is, in project management, is hugely important. So I, it's one of the reasons I echo keeping the Committee and also agreeing with expanding it and bringing in other players. You know, I've been with the Capital Committee over the last 11 years, the Energy Committee has been kind of an ebb and flow based on membership, but it's been so hugely important to a lot of the projects that have gone on, the capital projects in town, and its ability to reach into other avenues, both within the government and outside, based on the work that it already does, is a leverage point that I think we would lose if we kind of bifurcated this into, you know, into something else. So I fully support Mike's approach and, and, you know, continued refinement.
Yeah, you know, I'm in, I'm in agreement with everyone else of not considering two tasks or two groups and just kind of figuring out how to build it into one. I did have a question to Jody, actually. I think the last time we had talked about this, we were going to dive a little bit further into a few of the towns that have similar, you know, structures and stuff like that. I don't know if you've had a chance to do that. There was a list originally that Climate Action provided, but I think we're going to dive a little bit deeper to see how it really plays out in real life. Did that happen?
I, yes, I did do some research on that, and Beth graciously helped me pull some things together. I shared that with the Energy Committee and with the Board of Selectmen, I think, in an email, but I didn't, oh, Select Board, sorry. But I did not analyze myself, but I did collect data and shared it with the parties. But while I'm speaking, if you don't mind, I guess, you know, I, I've really enjoyed working with the Energy Committee over the years, and I think they have lately been even more active recently on many things. And I do see a little overlap between the, the two groups, and I do have staff that do assist the Energy Committee. Eric Heidman and Paul Fox do attend their meetings and/or provide guidance, as I do on a lesser level. But I, I think for us, it'll be clearer if we have one group directing us, working with us than trying to manage two different groups with perhaps differing views. So that's easier for us, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Anita, did you have, I know you, you had a question, anything else? I just don't want to cut you off.
No, but I, I mean, I didn't, I was reflecting a little bit on what Beth was saying earlier about like the DEI Committee and how it's a really large group and kind of trying to like bring in more expertise and voices and stuff to the table. But one, one difference that, that I noticed or was thinking about while you were saying that was just that we didn't have a comparable or sort of related committee beforehand, right? And so, but there, the Energy Committee does exist, so trying to figure out how we can leverage what we already have and the expertise and professionalism and stuff that we have within our, within our town structure, and figuring out how to, you know, maybe grow it to, to be more expansive and inclusive of the resolution.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not going to repeat what all of my fellow Board members have said, except to say that, that I am in agreement with them, that it should be one Committee as opposed to two separate Committees. I also agree with, you know, what Scott said is that, you know, everybody needs to be an equal member, everybody needs to be a voting member within the Committee. And I do think we should expand it because I don't, honestly, and I think, you know, everybody agrees with me, that five people cannot take this task, undertake this task along with everything else that you've done along the way. And it does, you know, it gives us the opportunity to bring in, you know, new people, people with new expertise, new perspectives. So I think all of that is, I think, very exciting and very forward-looking for the town. So it would be my suggestion to the Board, because I think that this is our responsibility versus the Energy Committee or the Climate Action Committee, that we as a Board, take a look at the charge and determine whether we should change it, expand it, modify it, and do, you know, do that. I think we need to have a discussion as to how large, or, you know, what the, how large the Committee should be, how many members. I, I guess I, for one, right now, don't want to set a firm number because I'd actually like to see, you know, what kind of applicant pool we get and how many people we get. I mean, you know, if we get people who, you know, it makes the Committee 11 versus nine, I don't know that we'd say, no, we don't want two more people. So I, I'd like to see what the applicant pool looks like. I mean, if we get, you know, 45 people applying, then obviously I think we're going to have to make some, you know, decisions along the way. But my suggestion would be is that between now and, you know, over the next month or so, because we probably are not going to be meeting again into December, that we look, that we work on a charge and then advertise on the webs, on the town manager's website and on the town's website that, you know, we're looking for new folks for the, for the expanded Energy Committee. So that would be my suggestion to the Board. I don't know how people feel about that. Mark?
Yeah, no, I completely agree. Do you want, do you want a motion by chance at all, or is this not the necessary?
I do in a moment, because I have, I don't know that we need a motion, but I do have a question from the audience, so let me, let me go to that, okay? Emily Teller has asked, will the new, quote, "recrafted" Committee decide their charter goals and leadership? Is there a timeline for doing that and/or a report back to the Select Board? So I think to answer the first part of that in terms of the Charter, I think that that's the Select Board's, at least initial task, to, to draft the Charter. I think we've always told various Committees that if they want to amend or modify the Charter, that they're welcome to come back to the Select Board with any changes that they might have. In terms of the goals and the leadership, again, I think, and I think the DEI Committee is perhaps the latest example of that, is what we usually do as a Board is we give you your Charter, we appoint the members, and then we leave it up to the Committee to, you know, establish its own internal workings and its goals and, you know, its leadership, et cetera. And we let the Committee do that. And in terms of is there a timeline to report back to the Select Board, we can talk about that. So, so with that, back to you, Mark. I, I don't know, and, and Jody, maybe you can help us out. Do we, do we need a specific motion for this right now, or can we just, Tom, I'll get back to you in a minute? Or can we just basically say this is what, you know, the Board will, will do this and bring it back at our, whatever meeting we decide to bring it back in January?
I think a motion would be helpful. That helps direct staff and just make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay. All right.
Jerry DeBillo, I believe, is on the line. Jerry DeBillo, who is a, a member of the Energy.
Okay, hang on a minute. Okay, um, all right, so Jerry, are you out there? I don't see your name, actually.
Yeah, he's a analyst. He's, he's self-muted right now.
I am.
Did you want to say something or add something, Jerry?
I think my only comment is I think you've got, probably got a couple of members of the new Committee there already, one being the, probably the town manager or assistant town manager, and Paul Fox. Just a suggestion.
I guess one of the things that we, as a I guess one of the things that we as a board can decide is whether, you know, those folks act as, as voting members or are they, are they advisors to the committee, just as, you know, we have town personnel who are advisors to various other committees. And then, okay, and then we have a question. Could the, could the advertising include social media? Could the advertising including social media include a new name, please? So that people don't think it's just the same Energy Committee. And there's a similar question. Okay, the last three questions were all really around the question that I just asked, which is the new name for the committee. Mark, before I get back to you, I know Tom had his hand up earlier.
Just, just related to exactly that point. I'm wondering if, if our motion could include not only a new language for the charter, but a new name. I think that would be helpful for what comes next.
Okay, Mark?
So I'll make a motion to advocate, to have the Energy Committee expand and rename itself with a charter and a discussion to be had during the second Select Boards meeting in January. Obviously, there wouldn't be any advertising for positions prior to that because we don't know what we're advertising for. So it wouldn't be the first one after the holidays. It would be the second one.
Okay. Is there a second to, to Mark's motion?
Second.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Of course. Pardon?
I had a question on the motion. I don't know if Mark said that the Energy Committee would be renaming itself and rechartering itself or that the Select Board would be needing to do the rechartering and renaming and deciding on the size of the committee.
They can't, they can't do it themselves. So, no, it was, if I didn't say it, that's what I meant. It was us doing that at our second board meeting in January.
Okay. All right. Let me just make sure we have no other questions. And I don't see any others. So all those in favor of the motion, Scott?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so once again, let me thank all of you for all your hard work and your efforts. And I'll, hang on a minute, Mike. All your hard work and efforts and all the information that you've brought to us, really, really appreciate it. We are, as I said, we're going to be, this will be back on our agenda, the second meeting in January. What I would invite any of you to do is if, and I bet you do, if you've got suggestions or ideas about what the charter should look like, what it should say, any creative names for the new committee, please forward them to us so that we can consider them before our meeting in January. And, and Mike, I know you have your hand up.
Thank you. Just a question. Is there anything specific, it was going to be, is there anything specific you're looking for from the Energy Committee in the interim? We certainly can individually, as well as at our next meeting in January, consider if we can provide any feedback along those lines. But I specifically was asking, do you want the Energy Committee to do anything specific along those lines?
I don't know that there's anything specific, but as I just said, if you've got thoughts about, you know, a revised charter, if you've got thoughts about a new name, please feel free to forward them to us in time for our, our meeting. So that, yeah, we can certainly consider them. And same for, you know, Westford Climate Action and also for anybody out in the public who's interested. You know, please feel free to send us your thoughts and ideas. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right. We are now at our 7:30 PM item, which is a update on COVID-19 and the impacts on town operations during this period. So, um, I know the first is we have a request for a waiver of 2021 General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12, Alcohol Restaurant License Renewal Fees. And brought by Scott, I'm going to sneeze, excuse me. Scott Pelletier, who is the owner of Fuse Bistro. So Scott, if you'd like to present your request, and thank you for joining us tonight. I think you're still muted. Eric, is he still muted?
Yes.
Okay. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I'm requesting to waive the license fees for 2021. This is not without precedent. There's been many other towns in Massachusetts that have already done so. Some of them being Quincy, Springfield, Malden, Holyoke, Melrose, Waymouth, Salem, Beverly, Danvers, Winchester, Marshfield, Plymouth, and Lowell. And I, I believe there's more, but those are the ones that I could find by doing the search on the internet. So we were closed, obviously, roughly for three months, and then we were able to open for outdoor dining only, but that was until midnight. Then on November 6th, we were dialed back to 9:30 PM. So basically, so far this year, we've only been able to use our liquor license for three months. It also looks like it's going to extend into next year, I believe, most likely, obviously, and maybe up until March or later. So if it goes till March, that'll be one year, one calendar year of us not being able to use our full liquor license. And just to give you some like statistics from the restaurant in Westford, we are down 50% in our alcohol sales from last year.
Okay. Comments or questions? Actually, before I get to comments or questions from the board. Jody, I know just in our materials, I know you've had Dan just do an analysis of the revenue that we, that we get from alcohol. Okay. Licenses, can you just let us know what that is?
Yes, the revenue for the upcoming year would be $71,500.
Okay. Okay, so questions or comments from the board? None? Mark?
Yeah, so Scott, thanks for bringing this forward, and I certainly feel for you and all of, all of the other business owners who are, who are suffering. Is this request for everyone, or is this for you in particular? I just want to make sure I understand.
Well, I'm requesting for myself, but, you know, I, I know that all the restaurants are hurting. And I know that the other towns that have, that have done it have done it for everyone. But I don't, I don't know how it works with your board, but that's, that's what the other towns have done.
Okay, thanks.
Other comments or questions?
Jody has her hand up.
Jody? Yep.
So I did ask around locally, and some have waived, some are hearing it this week. Some have waived half of the fee. So there's a variety of different things that have occurred. So, you know, I just wanted to mention that.
Tom, then Scott?
Yeah, that, thanks, Jody. And that gets to part of my question, which is, is there some sort of proration that has been considered or put into place other places? I'm, I'm very sympathetic and grateful to Scott and the other entrepreneurs and restaurateurs that are providing services in town. But it's, it's an incredibly difficult time for the town, for us to provide the services that we need to provide. So I'm, I just want to be extra careful if we're providing any kind of relief or contemplating relief for any one class of folks, given that, I think, in different ways, lots of people in town are under stress in lots of ways. So I guess it's helpful for me to think about it, if you've seen Jody, that there's some proration, like 50% that, that other towns have pursued. Thanks.
I, I can't.
Hang on a minute. Scott, hang on a minute. I, I get to, I get, I get to do this. Jody, do you, do you have an, can you answer Tom's question or not?
Well, I haven't done an analysis statewide, but there is a mixture. Again, some have not waived. Some have waived half of the fee and others have waived the full fee. So, but this is for the upcoming year, not going backwards. We do have an $875,000 deficit right now in the current fiscal year. And our numbers are showing about a 1.3 deficit for next year, though that's still preliminary. So the town's definitely in tough shape. We, we have great sympathy for our local businesses. We are working on a micro enterprise grant right now. I don't know whether you would classify or whether you would, you know, be a person that would be able to receive that. You need to have five or less employees. But we could, if you do, then we could be able to give you about $10,000. But so there's, it's a mixed bag.
Okay. Mark, before I get to you, Scott had his hand up. So Scott?
Jody, that's my question, which was, you know, what I, I feel that restaurants and hotels are ground zero for the economic impact here. I don't want to be helping a business and losing a town staff person that's also serving the community. So I just want to get, I wanted to know what the budget whole looked like, and that's what I know. So thanks, Jody.
Mark?
Yeah, so just a couple of questions. So this is for the upcoming fiscal, so fiscal '22 that Scott's in front of us for, or the current?
So the alcohol licenses run on the calendar year, so their licenses expiring in November. And this will be a renewal that starts in January, so it's kind of a half of fiscal year.
Okay. And I didn't get a chance to see it today, but, so what is the governor's latest edict on dining? Somebody just update me.
The governor.
Oh, go ahead, Jody. I didn't, okay, go ahead.
So basically, for restaurants, they're supposed to have six at a table versus 10. And I don't think he changed the time period that they can serve at outdoor, indoor. There's different things, but basically for restaurants, I think the major one was to go down to six per table. Would you agree with that, Scott?
Scott, do you want to add to that? I, I know also it's putting a 90-minute limit on diners. And did they decrease your capacity from 50 to 40% now as well?
Well, we've been, the capacity has been always, for us, six feet apart for the tables anyway. So basically, we haven't been able to get 50% capacity with that anyway. So we've always been, pretty much been at 40, so that doesn't affect us. But the only other thing is you have to have the mask on when you're not actually eating or drinking, which really doesn't affect all that much, except I feel it may throw a scare into people or they might just feel it's too much of a hassle and not want to come out. So.
So Andrea, can I just have one follow-up to that?
Sure, yeah.
So the, the, I should know this after 12 years. These licenses, the, the payments are due when?
They have to pay before they pick up their license. So generally, they pay, you know, and pick them up before January 1st. But we don't issue, their license expires December 31st.
Okay.
And we have had, we have had two or three restaurants turn their license back in because they closed. So we do have a couple of extra licenses out there, too.
So here's my, and again, I, you know, I, I don't know how this plays, you know, with all the other businesses. But, you know, I think about the restaurants, you know, they benefited a little bit, not, not for the overall business, but relative to what was happening before by being able to be outside, for those who wanted to be outside. We're now entering a period of five months where that's not going to exist at all. And so, you know, thinking about maybe a 50%, because half the year, I mean, listen, January, February, March, I'd be surprised if people are going in to, to the restaurants much, much at all. And I hope they do, but that makes me nervous. And so they don't have that outside venue really to kind of leverage, you know, the possibility of doing it. So I'd certainly be in favor of, despite the fact that, that where we are as a town budget, you know, I think one of our missions is trying to keep as many of these businesses alive as we can. And if 50% is helpful toward that end, then that is something that I can support.
We do have a question which is asked, has asked by Emily Teller, which is, just what is the, the cost of your license, of your alcohol license, Scott?
I believe it, let me see, I have it here. It is, Westford license is $2,525 a year.
Okay, thank you. I, I think, you know, I, I agree. I am certainly sympathetic to the restaurant industry and the businesses and to, to all small businesses that are just suffering in this pandemic. I, because, you know, and we, we talked about this when we were talking about the Roden Bush lease, you know, because we don't know for sure what the next, you know, year is going to look like. I'm, I don't know that I want to, I, I could support waiving the fee for the entire year because come June or July, you know, things may be back to some semblance of normalcy and you may be operating, you know, full steam ahead again come June or July. So I, I, that is my hesitancy in giving you a full year's waiver. But I also understand the next three to four months are going to be really difficult for folks in the restaurant business. So I, I, I like Mark could support, you know, a, a pro rata, a pro rata approach of, you know, perhaps 50% and, you know, bring this back in May or the beginning of June and look at it again and see where we are then and, and what's happening and in, both in our town and in the industry and in the world at that point in time.
Andrea, just want to make sure you see Anita's hand.
Yep, I got it. Anita, go ahead.
You know, I actually have a lot of family members who have attempted restaurants, and I know how hard it is to keep a restaurant thriving and stuff. And I, I know that we're losing restaurants and local businesses in town, and it's really dire. And, but I, I agree with the other board members about considering a prorated approach or if we're able to, Jody, like revisit this later, just because we are, you know, we had enough, there is a situation where we had to burlow our town staff as well. So it's just a hard place to be. And I, my heart breaks absolutely every time I hear about a local business, like a restaurant for sure, closing. And I, you know, like all the time trying to support our businesses, and I, I just know it's so hard. And I, I really appreciate that you're here asking on behalf of the other businesses in town.
Well, it would be really helpful if we got some help from the federal, federal government, but I'm not sure when and if that's coming. But Mark?
Yeah, so one other thought. So if we waived just towards this 50% thing, and I don't know if this can work, Jody, but if we said we were going to waive, you know, 50% and that the 50% would not be due until July 1st, so that the first half of the year, when their revenue may be quite low, you know, they have their license, but they're not, they're not having to pay it, but they may pay the 50% as of July 1st for the second half of the fiscal. I don't know technically how that could work, but I would imagine from a cash flow perspective, that's better for Scott than just a. Than just a, you know, a fifty percent waiver upfront.
Jody, could, could, could we make that work? I would think we could somehow.
Hold on, I'm just asking a question of somebody else. Patty is out there, too. I, I don't know if Patty wants to speak, so maybe we should let Patty speak before I do. But while, while we're getting her on, there's another thing I want you to be thinking about before you finish this is that would this pertain to club licenses, too? We do have many clubs in town, American Legions, Franco, those, those clubs. And would it also pertain to in holders, the Regency, the residents in? So just something for you to think about while you're deciding what you want to do, because they have all alcohol licenses also.
Scott?
I think that we have to include them, I think the clubs have got probably even worse situation, they probably get less, less food sales as a fraction of their revenue than alcohol, so they're probably even hurting worse. And the hours tend to be evenings and later, so. Yeah, if we're going to be fair to all the folks who are hurting, I think we need to include.
Anita?
My, my understanding was that seventy-one thousand five hundred that we were, we were looking at potentially waiving was inclusive of all of those as well, was that right, Jody?
Okay, right.
And let me just add, I don't think Patty was trying to speak. I think what she was asking, we don't typically give a service and charge.
Jody, Patty's here, look.
Let me just finish with my sentence. We don't typically charge for a service after someone got the service. Like the whole fee is supposed to be to offset the cost of delivering the service. So that would be very unusual to allow someone to have a service for six months and then charge them. I don't know if that's legal, I would need to check on that. So if that's, if that's what you're thinking, I'll have to check with council.
Scott, hang on one minute.
You certainly wait percent, but I don't know if you could do it six, let them go free six months and then charge them for the second. I don't know, I'd have to look.
Patty, do you want to add to that?
No, Jody's actually said exactly what my questions were. You know, we do have some payments. We weren't sure how this was going to go tonight, so anyone who has paid, we've just held everything. Any annual licenses, we have not cashed any checks at all. And included with with the licensing fee is the common vittler's fee, that's twenty-five dollars. That's the extra twenty-five that Scott Pelletier talked about. So, you know, I am charging other places that don't have alcohol, the common vittler's license. So there's some variables I just need to work out and know what I'm charging.
Mark?
Yeah, so the vittler's license, the twenty-five bucks, you know, just to make it so it's not so complicated, I'd say, yeah, everybody has that. But Jody, the, what is the difference of, if we waive the fee? For example, what's the difference between that and waiving the first half and making the payment in July? Like, I know technically it's different, but in, in concept, there's no, there's really no difference. If we waive the fee, we're still giving the service away for free. So all we're doing here is giving away the, the first half for free with the second half being due and payable on July first.
So again, I don't want to give wrong advice. I'm not sure, I have never, we've never waived permit fees for half a year and then charged after the half a year. It sounds like if you want to waive six months and then charge, but some of those businesses may not continue after that point. So I, I mean, if this is a decision you want to make tonight and that's the way you want to go, I, I'm going to excuse myself and try to call counsel and just make sure that this is legal for us to do it this way.
Scott?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on that, that Lowell has waived theirs for three months. They're, they're, what they're making us do in Lowell, because my other restaurant is in Lowell, is they've waived it for three months with the intent of they're checking the budget and maybe reducing it or waiving it altogether, but they're not making us pay. And they're not making a decision until April first. What we have to do is pay the victual's fee, and then if you had an entertainment fee, you had to pay that also. But, and then you had to show, you know, the past, your health and your fire and your occupancy, just like you always have to do every year. Making sure you have all those and then showing that you have your liquor liability insurance. But they're not, but they're waiving it for three months and then they're hoping to be able to balance the budget where they can waive it for the year. But yes, they've already, they've already announced that they're doing that.
Okay, thank, thank you for that information. Tom?
Jody and Patty, too, I'm just thinking about precedent, is there other? There, there's an argument here that says we're asking these folks to pay for a license that then return, we or other government entities are not letting them use. So there is sort of a consistency in my head. Are there other licenses or fees we should be thinking about? Because just from a precedent point of view, if, if in the next meeting we've got five other people who say, look, we're, we're interested in deferring or waiving our fees. Is there anything that, that occurs to you, either Jody or Patty, that sort of fits this kind of description if we're making an economic decision, we should at least have in our minds?
Well, the other licenses we have would be the, the restaurants, we have used car licenses, we have the common vittler's license, we have automatic amusements, which are, you know, amusements in a facility. I'm trying to think of the licenses, there's and now that's about it. So those, and the entertainment, like Scott Pelletier mentioned, we have a couple of those. No, the, the, the costliest license is the liquor licenses, yes, definitely.
Okay, sounds like the majority of the impact then, thanks.
Right. So if you're, if you're running a gym, is there a license for that or is that exempt?
Licensing involved with the gym, it isn't through the Board of Selectmen, it could be health, and I don't think there is, but I'm not positive about that.
Just to say that those are the ones who are also going to be pretty heavily hit with this.
Jody?
So I did just speak with John Giorgio, and he does feel it's in your discretion if you would like to waive for six months and then your intention is to charge in six months. And certainly you could make another decision at that time, but he does feel it's in your discretion. So if that's what you'd like to do, you, you may do that.
Thank you. Anita?
I kind of like the Lowell practice of waiting for three months and evaluating it, if it's possible to consider that.
Mark?
Yeah, so I'm not going to, I won't fall on a sword for three or six. My only thought about the six, to be honest, is you know, as we sit, it sounded like from Scott, the three months was really kind of a function of they were evaluating their budget and wanted to kind of get a sense of where their revenues were. I kind of look at it from a business owner's perspective. I'm likely not to be able to sit outside in our lovely New England weather to leverage, you know, some of the better amenities of what the alcohol license is for until May, maybe June. And so that's my thought about the, the six months. And if, you know, something happens and they are able to be outside earlier, well, then maybe there's a month or two of benefit that they get. So I think something's better than, giving them something is better than not giving them anything, there's no doubt. But I'd still, for me, I'd go for six months.
Anita, and, and I'll get back to Scott, Anita?
I just have a question, and I, it's because I, I don't do this, but can you get alcohol to go for, as a part of your takeout?
Yes, we weren't allowed to do that until July twentieth. We were a little behind the other states, New Hampshire had it since May. But starting on July twentieth, we were able to have alcohol to go. But also within the same timeframe, obviously it stops at nine thirty, not two AM. And the other thing that I was going to add was that Mark's six months would be a lot more beneficial than three. Because I don't believe that this winter is going to be very kind to us. Once people can start sitting outside and the vaccine gets rolled off for more people in like May and June, then I think that's when we will start to see people come out again.
Scott?
Yeah, I think it's sort of the fact that, that restaurants who had license for the past nine months, they really couldn't use. So in some ways, if you give until June, if they can get business on May first, great, they, they gained two months, but they lost nine coming into it, so I'm with Mark on giving them six months.
So do you want a motion, Andrea? Or sorry, Jody?
Yeah. After Jody speaks.
Sorry, I want to make sure you're considering what I'm going to say before your motion. So it would be helpful if we collect in fiscal year twenty-one because of the deficit we have. So if you, if you want to collect June first, it still could be a six-month proration if that's what you're looking for, but that would help us for this fiscal year, which if not, we have to use our free cash to plug that hole, so.
That, that certainly makes sense. So yes, Mark, then if you'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, so that's an excellent point. So I'll make a motion to waive the all alcohol license for, for fifty percent with payment due for the, for the fifty percent. June first, June fifteenth, I'm, I'm open to whatever.
Jody?
I'm assuming you want to include wine and malt, too? We have wine and malt licenses, not just all alcohol.
Was that part of the seventy-one?
Yes. So it's all alcohol, wine and malt?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and for restaurants, clubs and, and ends, right?
Anybody who holds an all alcohol.
Anybody who's on that seventy-one.
I'll, I'll second it then.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Scott, for bringing this forward. You know, good luck, I know it's going to be a hard winter. All I can say is, you know, hang in there.
All right, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, have a good evening.
All right, you as well.
All right, um, our next item is certification of our fiscal year twenty-one tax rate and the requests that we have received from the Department of Revenue to apply four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in stabilization funds in order to cover the recreational enterprise revenue shortfall. So hi, Dan, how are you tonight?
I'm doing okay, how are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. You want to update us and also our viewing public?
Sure, so the Board of Selectmen set the tax rate at their last meeting and the day after we submitted the tax rate recap to the Department of Revenue for review. On last Wednesday, we heard from our DOR rep that they had an issue with the shortfall in recreation enterprise revenue in FY twenty. We only collected eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars and our estimated budget for FY twenty-one as passed out to town meeting was about one point two eight million. So there's a shortfall of about four hundred and thirty-four thousand that they wanted us to plug that gap before certifying the tax rate. So they gave a couple of options for us to do that. One was to call a special town meeting and either reduce the recreation enterprise budget or apply one-time funds against it. The other option was to give evidence that we're collecting that money this year. And of course, as you know, we weren't able to continue the Western Partnership for Children program because not enough people enrolled in it, so we had to discontinue that for now. And the other option, which is, you know, was recently approved due to COVID, so we don't have to call a special town meeting, was that the Board of Selectmen can apply one-time funds from the stabilization fund to cover this gap for now. So I, I will say that we knew about this deficit, we were planning on funding it in June, had the tax rate in set. This just speeds up the process and funds it now. It's, it's basically semantics, we're in the same exact shape we would be at the end of the year as we would be right now, so.
Okay, and, and, and Dan, one thing, we're the select board now?
I'm sorry, select board.
We all have to get used to it. Any, 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 yeah, you do, Mark, you do. Any, any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none and not seeing any from the audience, is there a motion? Tom?
I will make a motion, and I'm just pulling up the agenda to get the wording right. We make a motion to apply four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in stabilization funds to the, to balance the fiscal twenty-one operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, Dan.
Great, thank you all.
Okay, moving right along, we're at old and new business. So we have a request to approve draft language of the Home Rule petition regarding Rome Drive extension to petition the Mass General Court as authorized by special town meeting. Hi, Jeff, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you. Good evening, Jeffrey Morrison, I'm your Director of Land Use Management. We're here tonight as a follow-up action from recent town meeting. As you may recall, town meeting unanimously supported Article twenty-five, which was intended to take monies, which originally started as subdivision surety, to guarantee the completion of Rome Drive extension. Those monies through court action unfortunately became sort of public monies. And so council advised us it would take special legislation to disperse those monies to the lot owners of Rome Drive Extension. So what we're asking the board to consider tonight is to simply review and hopefully approve the language as suggested by town council. Then we work with town clerk to actually submit the petition on the town's behalf. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I don't see any, so, oh, I do see one, Anita.
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thanks, Jeff, for everything that you do and for following this so closely. And just in general, thanks for everything.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
Okay. With that, is there a motion to approve the draft language of the Home Rule petition?
They're moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. Thanks, Jeff, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Okay, our next item is a request to renew annual junk dealers licenses. And just for the audience and everyone, it's a really bad name, but what it is, is this, it, it refers to unattended donation receptacles, so the donation bins that you see, for example, for clothing, you know, for shoes, for books, it's really not junk. And the requests to renew are for the New England Clothes Recycling located at one seventy-nine Littleton Road and three forty-one Littleton Road. Planet Aid Inc. located at one Carlisle Road and two East Prescott Street. And three Windward Trading Group Limited located at sixty-seven West Prescott Street. So is there a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Second.
There's, thank you. And then all those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. All right. So we have a request from the DEI Committee for an extension of time to provide an update on the progress of its work until January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one. Anita, do you just want to update us?
Yeah, so the committee has only met twice, we're going to meet for the third time, Wednesday night, tomorrow night. Yeah, so the committee has only met twice. We're gonna meet for the third time, Wednesday night, tomorrow night. And in our charter, or in the committee's charter, we said that we would ask for an update at the end of this calendar year. And it doesn't, there wouldn't really be much of an update. I've been giving little updates the past couple of select board meetings anyways. So we were gonna put in a request to see if we could extend that timeline and come back at the end of January, on the 26th, for a progress update.
I think that makes sense. So is, is, is there a motion to, to extend the timeline?
Yeah, I think we're a little slow part to getting it set up, so I would absolutely agree. I'd make a motion that we extend the timeline to end of January.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah, hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. So I have spoke with Jody and asked her sort of what was on the horizon for our agenda in December, and it looks like we really can get away with not meeting again in December since our next meeting would be, you know, Mark, you're welcome to meet by yourself.
I'll be on in case anybody would like to just chat.
But our next meeting is, is the Tuesday, December 22nd. So in light of the fact that it doesn't appear that there'll be all that much to discuss, and also recognizing that will mean that our first meeting in January will probably be a very full agenda, but we will have all rested for a month, so we'll be ready to go after the holidays. It is my recommendation and suggestion that we, we forego our meeting on December 22nd. And if anybody has any issue, or if anybody has any concern with that, please let me know. Happy to hear from you. And as Mark just volunteered, you can get online and chat with Mark on December 22nd.
Fireside chat with Mark at 7 o'clock on the 22nd.
Okay. So anyway, so for the, for the, for the audience and for town staff, we won't be meeting on December 22nd. And because we won't be meeting on December 22nd, I, I really would like to take this opportunity to, first of all, wish everybody happy holidays. I know it's going to be a different holiday celebration for all of us this year, but hopefully everybody will find joy in the celebrations that they do have. And then secondly, I really want to wish, I really want to thank, on behalf of the board, all of our town staff, all of our town employees, all of our volunteers, everybody who in this incredibly challenging year has worked so hard to make sure that our town continues to function, to provide the services that, that, you know, we're known for, and, and just to go, you know, above and beyond the call of duty. Thank you all, all so very much. We are deeply, deeply grateful and appreciative to all of you. So applause to all of you. Okay. We had, in our packets, we had a request to establish the 2021 Select Board meeting schedule. I looked at it. I, I didn't see any issues with it. Did anybody else have any issues with it? Jody, do we need to vote to approve it or establish it? Okay, she's nodding her head.
Make a motion to establish the 2021 Select Board meeting schedule as presented. As provided.
Thank you. All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Hi. And then lastly, under old and new business, we have a request to reappoint Tom Berry and Jane Calvin to the 12 North Main Street Task Force for terms expiring on June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
They're moved. Second.
Second? All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, consent agenda. We have a request to approve the following. A banner request for the Westford Youth Lacrosse Spring 2021 Registration. The applicant is Karen Bauer, and the dates are Wednesday, December 9th, 2020, to Saturday, December 19th, 2020, in front of the JV Fletcher Library. And then we have a request for use of the Town Common, the event, the Hanukkah menorah display, Rabbi Zalman of the Chabad of Neshaba Valley. The dates are Thursday, December 10th, 2020, to Friday, December 18th, 2020. A Hanukkah celebration from, the date is Sunday, December 13th, 2020. The applicant is Rabbi Zalman of the Chabad of Neshaba Valley. The time is 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. And then lastly, Christmas Eve church service. John Rawls on behalf of the Cornerstone Congregational Church on Thursday, December 24th, 2020, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Okay. Do we have any board reports or updates? Okay, seeing none. We have minutes for approval. Minutes from the following regular sessions, August 25th, September 8th, September 15th, September 22nd, September 29th, October 13th, and October 18th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes and release them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And then we have executive session meeting minutes from November 24th, 2020, not for release. Is there a motion to approve and not release?
They're moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Town managers report. Jody? So my first request is for you to authorize KP Law to represent Westford and AIR in an intermunicipal agreement for the fire engine use and storage. So we're not authorizing AIR, but you're being advised they're representing both towns, different attorneys within the same firm. And just so folks know and understand, because KP Law represents both Westford and AIR under, under attorney and professional ethics rules, they need to get waivers of consent from both AIR and from us to permit them to do that. So that's the reason for the request. And they've represented that they don't see a conflict. So is there a motion to, so, oh, look, Mark, you have a friend. Mark has a friend with him.
She's the only one I know who likes to hear me talk, so that's why she came in.
Okay, is there a motion to, to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the waiver.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Scott?
Hi.
Okay. All right. So I wanted to announce, I announced a couple of grants. We were awarded a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for our 911 department training, and that amount was $24,868.44. We also got a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety to support our municipal road safety program, and that was $19,250. We did receive grants, as we usually do, from Maya, our insurance carrier, for safety training for employees in the amount of $9,780. So thank you to all staff that worked hard on that. I did enclose a draft RFP for our insurance broker for health insurance, and I did make some edits today to that. If you had a chance to look, we wanted any input, and we'll be releasing that shortly.
Good.
Thank you for all of your hard work on that, Jody, and staff's hard work on that. Really appreciate it. This is something I know that we've wanted to do for a while, and so hopefully will lead to even, you know, more health savings for us as a town. So thank you. So everybody's good with it to be released? Okay. All right, and then request approval for the following contracts, a one-year contract to renewal with Natural Systems Utilities for professional wastewater services in the amount of $180,569.07. The Town of AIR, which you just approved, council working on that with us, for an intermunicipal agreement for fire engine use and storage at the Fletcher Fire Station 1. And Pro EMS Solutions for COVID-19 testing and other management services as requested by the Fire Department. And I will just explain on that, that is to allow our paramedics to conduct COVID testing on public safety personnel only. Purchase orders, if you have any questions. I do, Jody. I just have one question about the, the agreement with the Town of AIR. I, I noticed that it was for 25 years. I was wondering why it was for 25 years? I think the fire chief is in the background there. I, I don't know if he wants to answer that question. Basically, is he getting on?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. I, I saw that in the contract, too. I, I don't know if that's just, if there was a clerical error, we were worried more about maintenance and fuel and stuff like that. The, the engine is a 2001, I believe, so I don't think it would make it another 25 years. But we're just looking for the short term until we get our, hopefully we purchase a new one.
I, I kind of, I knew that we were just looking for it for the short term, so that's why the 25-year longevity clause caught my eye.
Right. We, we did have, we have one that did not pass state inspection. The frame and the corrosion really got to it this fall, so we have one spare. And unfortunately, a couple of weeks ago, we went down two frontline pieces because one had some motor issues. I had to return back to the Cummings dealer for oil leak, and the other one had some emission issues. So they're both out. So Groton also had a piece that led us on a short term. We do have one reserve engine right now that's a 1994. And so with, with the help of our neighbors, we'll get through this. We got, actually, Andrew went back, came back yesterday. So we're just down one right now, one frontline piece.
Great, thank you. Anita?
Yeah, you know, sorry if I should know this. I just don't remember this right now, but you know, obviously, it sounds like there's a lot of needs around fire engine. Is this on the list for capital or what's our?
It is on the list for capital. We also came before the board a couple of months ago about pursuing the SAFER grant, which we're gonna apply for. If we get the SAFER grant, we're hoping that capital funds the full amount of the engine. It's about, I want to say it's around $700,000, but if we get the SAFER grant, and my recommendation to Jody and to capital would be to go ahead and actually get two of them. The cost with the discount by two at the time would be basically about $60,000 for a $700,000 fire engine. If we get it, we get the grant.
Thanks. We're hoping our residents will support so we don't have to be driving Groton and AIR trucks around town for too long. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Okay.
I, I would also add, one of these trucks that's broken down is not that old, but it has proved to have many problems through the years, so we need to get rid of it, so. All right, so do you want to keep going, or would you like to vote on those contracts? Why don't we vote on the contracts, and then we can go do the purchase orders? So is there a motion to approve the contracts?
They're moved. Second.
And all those in favor? Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. I will check on that 25 years, too. I did not catch that, and if, if we need to reduce that, we, we will, so.
I, I assume there's a cancellation clause in there somewhere where you.
Okay, so the purchase orders I have is for CW, CDWG for Microsoft licenses in the amount of $41,649.85. Makepeace for HP Design Jet Printer and Platter in the amount of $11,875. SiteOne Landscape Supply for grounds maintenance materials, $11,900. And for the Rodenbush from the Rodenbush lease account, Cooling and Heating Specialists for Boiler System Repairs for $8,000, and Cooling and Heating Specialists for Boiler Systems Repairs at the Frost School. The other one was Rodenbush for $4,500. Any questions? Seeing none. Tom, Scott?
That's Christmas. I mean, again, I keep on raising questions when we, we get repair bills at Rodenbush for a new heating system. I guess it just encourage us next time to get a better warranty?
Yeah. I will pass that along to Paul Fox.
I'm trying to remember. I'm not sure it got a new. I just can't remember if it got a new boiler system.
I thought it did. Maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it was all new because it was, it was so old.
Eric, do you know out there?
Yes, the boiler system was completely replaced, and I see Paul Fox just unmuted himself. He might have something to add.
Okay, Paul?
Yes, hi, Paul. Here, Director of Facilities for the Town of Westford. The Rodenbush system was completely rehauled. And in specific, we have one unit that's going into the main office right there on the first floor. And there is a leak in one of the refrigerant lines, which is causing us issues, unfortunately. We only got a one-year warranty with installation of the system. So to Scott's comment that, yeah, ideally, I guess it would be a longer type warranty to cover the fixing and the repair of this. So what the $8,000 that we're requesting for at the Rodenbush will ultimately go towards is trying to trace this and specifically find where the leak is occurring, and then obviously stopping the leak and going from there. I'm, I'm hoping not to come close to that $8,000 number, but I really would prefer not to continue to come back here multiple times asking for more money, so I'd say.
Most people don't want to come back to us multiple times.
Yes, it is, it is certainly unfortunate that it occurred here so soon after the building was built.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. So with that, is there a motion to approve the purchase orders?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Tom can have the, the movement.
All those in favor? Scott?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Do we have a motion to waive correspondence? Is there a second?
Second.
By a show of hands, all those in favor? And is there a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
They're moved. Second.
All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Good night, everybody. Everybody have really good holidays. Have safe holidays. Be healthy, stay healthy, and good night, Westford. Merry Christmas. Bye. Mark will see everybody on the 22nd. Good night, everyone.